Welcome to this meeting of the Redcar Board Council, held on the 27th of July. Please make a note, can you please? Can you turn off your phones or make them silent? It is a great sadness that I have to announce the death of William McAllister, a neighbourhood operative with the council in the coastal street scene, Environment Services. Our thoughts are with his family and friends. Please come up standing and join me in a minute's silence with a mark of respect. Thank you. Item one, apologies for absence. I've absences from councillor Bendalo, Robert Clark, councillor Kay, councillor King, councillor Oliver and councillor Thompson. Any more? No more. To receive a declaration of interest. There's a form going around, if you've got any interest in anything we're going to do today, please use the form. The minutes of the last meeting has been formally approved by this meeting. Is there any debate on the other than the relation to accuracy? No. Can I propose that they be accepted, please? Councillor Brown, second please. To note the attendance metrics. Just noted. I've now received an announcement from myself, the leader of the council, the cabinet members. I'm just going to make one little announcement. I've really enjoyed my role so far as a mayor. So far, I've had a busy couple of months and at the moment I've done 41 engagements. So it's getting a bit hectic. But I enjoy being out and meeting people and meeting the community. Any announcements, the leader?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just before I start, I just want to make reference to the tragic news that I've heard this morning of the lady sea swimmer that lost her life this morning, who got into trouble last night. I don't know if her name's been confirmed publicly, so I won't name her other than to say she's, her and her family have got the deepest regrets of me and the thoughts of the family. Good to all. Well done, Mr Mayor, on your 43 trips out so far. So as you know, a new dedicated and hardworking cabinet has been appointed. All members have been working with fellow councillors, council officers, partners and the public to get on top of briefs and start helping make a real difference in our communities. This is a very challenging time for our communities, for our council. Everybody will understand and know, or well, everybody in the chamber will, that we inherited a 4.6 million overspend for the last financial year. At the same time, demand and costs for services to protect our most vulnerable children and adults continue to increase. Social care now accounts for over 60% of our budget and at the same time inflation continues to be high. Energy costs are high, interest rates are also high. Our challenges are clear, but we remain absolutely determined to protect our most vulnerable, provide first-class services to our residents and do what we can to boost the economy in the months and years ahead. A good start in the mission is the announcement that our family hubs and services to families are to be improved and thanks to a transformation plan, we are now one of the 75 local authorities chosen to receive extra funding. In our case, 2.7 million over the next three years to improve direct services to children and young people, not just to age five, but also up to age 19. A lot of hard work, including from my colleagues opposite, have gone into this and we will do all we can to deliver a transformation in the services from attending care to supporting teenagers. And also good news that an additional 850,000 of funding has been granted for the council's Change in Futures Programme, an initiative scheme to help adults experiencing serious issues in their lives. We are one of just 15 councils taking part in a scheme to help those experiencing homelessness, mental health issues, domestic abuse and much more. And I'd like to thank the councillors, the councillors, council officers and partners who are doing as much to help these individuals and the entire community. Progress has to be made in our major regeneration projects to improve our town, to boost our economy. Members, well, I've seen the latest Redcar Town Deal plans for a new leisure attraction on Redcar Seafront and the seaside properties which will be revamped. The ongoing improvements being made at Loftus Town Centre, including the creation of a new employment and skills hubs. The plans for new retail and leisure developments in Eston, the grants being made available for retailers in Gisborne. The list goes on. We must keep on these projects and make it more clean, uh, more, and it was good to councillor Lim Pallister and Beavis, to see, sorry councillor Pallister and Beavis, who looked off earlier this week, banging the drum so effectively about what we're looking to achieve in the borough. Finally, I'd like to point to the smaller ongoing projects that make a big difference to people's lives. I'm sure members will join me in applauding the work. Councillor Adam Brook has been doing with colleagues to improve play areas and parks, including the latest improvements in Grangestown. It was also great to see the national cycling championships being such a huge success recently, winning our beautiful borough and national attention. It was also heartening to see the brand new Family Festival Between the Tides creating a positive buzz and I'm sure it will be a big success next month under the guardianship of councillor Richardson. It all shows how Redcar in Cleveland is a great place to honour, to serve. Myself and my team are united to do all we can to make the borough an even better place to live, work and visit and to bring prosperity to the area. Thank you.
There needs to be a correction to what was said for the record, and that is procedural. The overspend last year was 4.9 million pounds and 2 million pounds was necessary to put into research for this year.
Can I stop you there? It's really a point of order. That's best stuff. I believe councillor Pallister wants to make an announcement.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm proud to announce the outstanding achievement by our economic growth team who recently won the best value category at the Yorkshire and Humber Construction Excellence Awards. The winning project was for the Cleveland Ironstone Mining Museum, now renamed the Land of Iron and will now go on to be shortlisted at the National Awards. Can he also thank the staff, the volunteers, the councillors, funders and the wider community who also made this fantastic project happen? Land of Iron is the only museum in the world dedicated to the ironstone mining industry, first to be opened in the region and one of the last to close. Many local residents, volunteers, visitors have family connections to the mine and the museum benefits from strong community support and pride in their heritage. In fact, it's a heritage tourism driver for the area. In winning this award, the judge has considered five categories. Value is a key driver throughout the design and construction process. Better outcomes for all stakeholders. Supplier engagement to ensure best value outcomes are understood and maintained. Examples of where decisions were determined by future outcomes, benefits ahead of short-term considerations. And lastly, performance data collected and compared against modelling forecasts. I would now like to invite Louise Anderson, Head of Place Development, and James Gordon, East Cleveland Projects Manager, to come up and receive the award on behalf of the council. Well done Louise and James and everyone involved.
Cabinet member wants to make an announcement.
No, I won't.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, you may have noticed a workshop invite appear in your diary for an all-member conference. This is now scheduled for Wednesday, the 11th of October, between 1:00 and 4:00 in this chamber. Agenda and papers will be sent out closer to the event itself, but will be for members to consider two items. This is the draft corporate and organisational plan and also to gather your initial thoughts on the direction of the medium-term financial strategy for the next few years. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, John. The next item is item seven. There's no question from the public. So it brings me to item eight. What I'd like to do is make a small adjustment to the agenda because the motion and the petition are the same subject. So I'd like to propose we change the order of the agenda to deal with the motion immediately following the petition. Kind of a second for that, please. Does everybody agree? Okay. I believe councillor Caroline Kay would like to introduce the petition at this meeting.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. The petition is to keep the two hours free parking in Gisborne, signed by over 1,800 people. There's no one in the community of Gisborne who does not support the petition. People were queuing in the street to sign and a large number of our local independent businesses not only signed it, but offered to collect signatures as well on our behalf. And that's why it's before you today for consideration. We wouldn't be doing our job as elected representatives of Gisborne if we didn't bring forward the things people care about the most, no matter how challenging they are. We understand how tight the budget is and of course, none of us have all the answers. However, we do have some of the questions, difficult questions. And that, I believe, is the role of opposition, to ask those challenging questions on behalf of our local communities. We know our town of Gisborne, we are in almost daily contact with our residents and our local businesses who are very clear about the need for free parking to continue. Grant funding from the combined authority during Covid was time limited and it's now ended. Redcar and Cleveland car parks are owned by Redcar and Cleveland Council and we urge the council to take control of these assets of ours and to consider how they might be used to benefit our communities further, rather than simply being viewed as cash cows. Gisborne is a major source of revenue for the council through its council tax and its business rates. Indeed, there is a widespread perception in the town that it's been Redcar's cash cow for a long time and this is certainly something you hear on the doorstep. Where does the money go? Where does it all go? It goes to Redcar. We are requesting today only a relatively small adjustment in the council's budget so we can make this small investment in Gisborne to support our local independent businesses and in doing so, generate more revenue into the local economy through footfall, through spend and through business rates. Generate more revenue into the local economy than what is lost through the free parking. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kay. Can I ask the cabinet member to respond, please?
Yeah, thank you for presenting your...
Councillor Quodman.
Okay, take two. Yeah, thank you for presenting your petition, which is accepted by this council. It's reached the threshold, as you know, to warrant a debate in this chamber and that debate will take place straight away within this, with this motion.
Does anybody else want to wish to speak?
Good afternoon, everybody. The High Street is the heart of any town, turning the local economy, delivering jobs, creating income and ensuring our borough has money to spend on vital services. Whilst we are talking about Gisborne on behalf of our residents and businesses, this goes the same with all the towns. During Covid, we were given a lifeline of a two-year funding by the TVCA to support the local economy and get it back on its feet. Add to Covid, we have a war in Ukraine, spiralling energy prices, an increase in the minimum wage and spending patterns changing due to internet shopping. Businesses are still desperately in need of this lifeline. In the last year, we have witnessed businesses set up GoFundMe pages. Have you ever heard of that before? Some have also have been running raffles because they couldn't fix the properties because of burglars. Many of these businesses are fighting to get into profit and not take wages themselves whilst employing local people and keeping that economy moving. Removing the free parking will definitely put a nail in some businesses' coffins. We spoke to shoppers and visitors in many of our town shops and businesses. Many of our shoppers come from out of town. The vast majority stated that if the parking wasn't free, it would encourage them to shop in places like Storksley or go to the retail parks. Whilst the cabinet is responsible to manage the budget, we are all stakeholders and we are all here for the good of our high streets. It is our responsibility to ensure that the towns thrive and the high streets survive. There are many ideas we can think of to support this funding, of which we will go into later. The cabinet wasn't shy in borrowing money to support other towns and projects and although we think that is the very last option we should look at, we still believe that you should invest to accumulate. Gisborne is a net contributor. Apart from vital services, we do receive very little, yet we contribute a lot. We've given 4.3 million in business rates, hopefully this year, and 18.4 million in council tax. This doesn't include the two new developments that are underway in our town and the one that is already going through planning. On top of this, we've got voluntary groups like Gisborne Bloom, Friends of Gisborne Cemetery, Gisborne Town Pride, Gisborne Tardy Up Group. These groups save the council thousands and thousands of pounds a year. We in Gisborne are happy to contribute to our borough, but we need to invest to grow. And what we're asking today is help us invest and help us keep our high streets alive.
Thank you. Councillor Alec Brown.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hadn't intended, I thought the debate was going to come with a motion, so I hadn't intended to speak at this point, but a few people are. I wanted, did want to leave from the other ward councillors of Gisborne before saying anything, however, I'm going to say it now. This is what it is. This is Simon Clarke's election campaign for his parliamentary seat being brought into this chamber. The very fact at the beginning, which I thanked and was thankful for, was the TVCA giving us that, giving us that money to be able to allow us to help the high street recover after the pandemic. Was Gisborne a ghost town before the pandemic? No, it wasn't. Did people pay to park there before then? Yes, they did. Is there other free parking availability than Gisborne? Yes, there is. Does this have a bigger impact in Redcar than it does in Gisborne? Yes, it does. And I thank Jacob Young MP for not bringing his parliamentary election into this chamber. So whilst I accept residents are unhappy, I would ask the Conservative group to take their pleas to the TVCA and to Ben Houchen.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Carl Quodman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Apologies, I thought we were going to go straight to the motion, so I'll speak on the petition now. Sir Simon Clarke, MP, once again playing politics and revealing how transparent he is at it. Sadly, he's trying to fool the good people of Gisborne to use them as tools in his desperate political survival game. Because he is deficient at delivering as an MP, here he is again pointing without substance and whipping up hysteria. Has he delivered anything substantial, anything tangible in Gisborne? I can't think of a single thing. To mitigate for his shortcomings, he's now running around residents and businesses saying our administration is taking away free stuff and making you pay instead. It's not hard to get a petition signed on that basis, but it's not true. The TVCA under Lord Houchen stopped funding the car parks in Redcar in Cleveland and we cannot afford to do without that revenue received from those car parks. To replicate this would cost around 225,000 pounds per year, simply out of the question for this council. For perspective, the Tories have over the past 13 years ensured the funding of this council remained lower, much lower than it was in 2010 and every year since. Year on year, the Tory administration has been devastating for this council and this borough, continually leaving us vulnerable and without certainty. Our spending power in Redcar in Cleveland that first year of the Tories' 2011 was reduced by over 37 million pounds, that's a town deal plus a lot of change. The next year it was 52 million or two town deals, the year after 48 million pounds less. Year on year, it's been the same story. This council has had to make continual cuts to services, projects and staffing because of the unfair funding matrix this Tories imposed on this region. When they point to funded government projects, remember that's our money they withheld from us. To date, had the Tories not come into power in 2010 and have Redcar in Cleveland received the same level of support we had back then, we would have been over 400 million pounds better off. 400 million pounds lost to central government and their agenda. It's the equivalent of 16 Redcar Town Deals or 20 Eston Precinct and Swimming Pools, although 20 million is clearly not enough for that. This offer of free parking in Redcar in Gisborne, while welcome, was simply Tory populism for the benefits of Matthews, Clarke and Young. The TVCA provided Redcar in Cleveland this funding as a temporary quick fix, headline grabbing offer and timed it to come to a natural end ahead of the local elections. Surprise, surprise. Had those elections been more favourable to the Tories, I'm sure they'd be cooking up another face-saving, short-term, headline-grabbing populist scheme on parking. Instead, they point to us. Free parking offer is the TVCA's prerogative. They should continue the original offer and work with all the Tees Valley authorities to bring in the technology so that car parking charges become smarter and fairer on residents struggling with the cost of living. That takes imagination, hard work and real effort, sadly something our current MPs lack. Clarke and Young could have spent their combined 10 years doing something productive like that. Instead, they ride the coattails of projects they have no ownership over and point at opposition councils who have no say over the funding set by their peers. If they really cared, they'd be intervening at this level and ensuring their constituents receive better levelling up deals. It's very easy to have people agree to have something given over for free, but this isn't free. Clarke's petition makes all Redcar in Cleveland's pay for this. Whether they use the car parks or not, or whether they drive or not, it's despicable to try and pressure someone else to pick up your bill, especially when they're skinned and you know they're skinned and they're only skinned because you picked their pocket. So stop playing games, Sir Simon Clarke, MP, and do something useful before your time is up. Thank you.
As a councillor, I'm going to bring in councillor Jebba Joy before I conclude the petition. I'm not allowing councillor Hart to say another because she's already spoke on the petition. So I'm going to bring in councillor Jebba Joy and then we'll move on to the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I want to thank councillor Hart and councillor Kay for actually bringing this petition because actually it highlights that there are funding gaps and the funding gaps are from the Conservative government, I'm afraid. This is a cynical petition. I think, I think it's quite transparent. It aims to politicise and drag sadly the people and the businesses of Gisborne along with you. I think it's quite transparent. I don't think, I don't think it's gone without note. This is a political football and I fully support that everybody in this chamber, you said it yourself, everybody, no one in Gisborne who does not support the petition, I don't support the petition, but we all support growth in Gisborne. But there is a balance to be struck between the council providing services, 60% of which we heard were for vulnerable people and our community. They also live in Gisborne. You're making a divisive issue about a non-issue and I fully support council leaders' attempts to push it back to the origin where it came from, which is the Tees Valley Combined Authority. This is a cynical political stunt, but thank you anyway.
Thank you. I know that councillor LeRoi is going to speak, but I'm going to conclude the debate and move on to the motion. It's moved by councillor Kay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion is as it's set out really in the papers. I don't propose to say my speech again, but it's well set out there and it's all about supporting our local businesses in the town. It's what they have asked us to do for them and that's why we're here today. We know it's a very difficult discussion, but that's why we're here, as the opposition, to ask those very difficult questions and see if we can resolve them.
Thank you councillor. I need a second for the motion. Thank you councillor. I need a second for the motion. Councillor Bill Phillips.
Hi there. I'd like to move an amendment to this motion, if you don't mind. And I think we're going to circulate this around. As it's going around, the amendment is to keep the first section and then that this council believes, delete four and five. And then in the resolution itself, to delete Cabinet and replace it with the TVCA, Tees Valley Combined Authority, and the Tees Valley Mayor. So effectively, that we're petitioning or we're resolving to send the petition to the Tees Valley Mayor rather than the Cabinet. And I'd like to reserve the right to speak. Okay?
Right. All right, switch it off. We're now going on to debate the amendment to the motion. Councillor Alec Brown. Councillor Alec Brown.
Right, thank you, Mr Mayor. No big speech. I said what I needed to say on the petition. However, I'm just going to refer you back to the speech I made when we accepted the Labour leader and the Labour Cabinet. And that was about reaching out, about working together across the chambers. I think this is a real watershed for everybody with a blue rosette because what this is, it is politics. You're bringing politics into the chamber. You all know we've got an overspend of £4.6 million. These are children, vulnerable adults we're talking about. Why should somebody in Child and Care Cleveland have £300 grand less for their future on spending? Or why should anybody in Dormantstown or all the deprived wards where we really need to be looking at, where children's services are invested in, because an MP wanted to play politics in this chamber? That's not right. Everybody knows that Gisborne had car parking before the pandemic. Everybody knows Gisborne was not a ghost town before the pandemic. Everybody knows it is in the TVCA and the mayor's gift to renew this funding or to at least lobby ministers for the funding and the grant. Okay, so again, this is a watershed. Is it party or is it residents?
Thank you councillor Brown. Councillor Leroy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just want to add to what's already been said. So first of all, we're experiencing the highest inflation for a generation. This has been created by a lack of willingness by the government and prime ministers that this man up here put in place, Jacob Young. We've got the highest tax since World War II. In addition, we've got the biggest drop in living standards ever. Now, I come from a retail family. In fact, I come from a Gisborne retail family. And let me just tell the Conservatives a thing about business and about the retail business. For the retail business, you need people with expendable cash, disposable cash. But when you have a £100 million cut to council services over 10 years and the biggest drop in living standards throughout that period, which isn't anything to do with the Ukraine, it's not to do with Covid, it's to do with decisions that have been made principally... Why are you laughing? That has been made principally by decisions that have been made over the last four years of government. Disastrous decisions that have impacted on the lives of people in Redcar and Cleveland in a dramatic way because it was already disadvantaged. This is plain economic sense. Now, the economic disaster was caused by the Conservatives and the government. Now, I understand it wasn't caused by these councillors here, but what you are doing, bringing this forward, is you are playing the elites' game in putting pressure on local individuals and shame on you for doing it. You have two MPs, you have a mayor of the Tees Valley who is now a lord, and God knows he doesn't deserve it. It's a cynical gameplay. And instead of the MP for Redcar and his counterpart, which mainly the MP for Redcar was guilty of this, taking selfies of himself with Parmos and curries and lemon tops. Why doesn't he go down to government and ask for proper funding from the area? Because unlike him, I'm from Redcar and I value this town and I've got real experience of Gisborne because I went to school there. So you should serve the community better and drop this cynical game plan. Thank you. Support the amendment.
Thank you councillor Leroy. Councillor Julie Hart.
And I'd also like to say shame on you and shame on you and you for making this political. Well, laugh away, Alec. Right, in your maiden...
Okay, kind of order. You can speak on the amendment eventually.
Thank you. Right, I'll get back to it. Right, this petition was brought because businesses, who some of us also have experience and have businesses in retail, and residents have approached us as councillors to complain about the car parking. And I just, you know, in your first speech, Alec, and I thought, do you know what? I'm going to get along with this guy, and I really did. You said, "Let's bridge the gap." All I've heard over this last week is politics, politics, politics. That's all we've heard. This is about our high streets. We have brought this petition for Gisborne, but it's not just Gisborne's High Street. You know, yes, the country isn't in the greatest state. You know, everyone will agree that, but you can't take away that for nearly a year, most people sat at home with 80% of the pay while the government looked after them. We have had and have a war in Ukraine. Energy prices have been out of control and the minimum wage has risen. All these things cost money. Going back to your budgets, the independent party in the last four years, I thought, did a very good job with the budget, from what I've looked at. And you've got to remember who was in power of that budget for the 20 years beforehand. Let's bring this back to the agenda. Let's do this like grown-ups and like a team and let's get this sorted out by Cabinet and not push the blame back on to the TVCA. Thank you.
I believe I can speak. In that maiden speech, I did absolutely want to bridge the gap. You've just made a gap with this motion. The TVCA brought in the funding. If you weren't playing politics and the residents were coming first, the TVCA and Ben Houchen would have been your first part of call. Did you go to them and ask them to renew it? So the answer's no.
Councillor Craig Hanaway.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sticking with the motion itself, the prevailing view of the independent group...
Councillor Hanaway, we talk about the amendment first, not the...
Yeah, sticking with the amendment itself. But I can't talk about... You see, I don't think the amendment addresses what it needs to address in the motion, so I can't avoid talking about the motion as well as the amendment. Sticking with the amendment and the motion itself, the prevailing view of the original motion in the independent group was that it was quite a flawed motion. And I think in order to change that, this is what the amendment would need to have addressed. In the section that says this council believes, the first point refers to our town centres in the plural. Second point, our high streets. The third point, our town centres. The fourth one, the town centre. And the fifth one, our town centres. And in the resolution, though, it refers to Gisborne itself. So we weren't quite sure what exactly this motion was committing the council to. And that it was quite confusing for that reason. So in the end, we decided we'd go our own way and decide on the day. You know, listen to the arguments and decide individually how we should vote. I don't think, as far as I can see in the amendment, it doesn't really clear those things up. I still wouldn't be clear voting for this, whether it was actually, what it was actually committing the council to. Is it committing the council to free parking in all town centres, which I'd be in favour of? Or is it committing to free parking in Gisborne? Or given that Gisborne, the Westgate, the council can't change the parking on Westgate, they can't change Morrison's car park, is it just certain car parks? And I think also as well, there is a reference to the council having a duty to provide the most conducive environment, which is still in the amendment. Now, I think obviously the council has to try to do that, but there are so many things that are not in the council's control. You know, the high rents on Westgate, high commercial rents are not in the council's control. The effect of, you know, the financial crash and austerity and Brexit and Covid, that's not in the council's control. So I think it would be better, if that's said, you know, that the council should do all within its power, as the first point does, to produce the most conducive environment.
Thank you. Councillor...
Thank you. I support this amendment of the original motion and I also echo that the original motion's been brought here today. As been pointed out by a few, it's actually Tees Valley Combined Authority that chose to fund this extra free parking across the borough, not Redcar and Cleveland Council. And although that extra funding was welcomed, any request needs to be made back to them, not us. Can I also remind members that despite what the original motion suggests, Gisborne does have other areas that offer periods of free parking that will remain. These include the cobbles on the High Street, supermarkets including Morrison's and Sainsbury's, the retail park that hosts M&amp;S and B&amp;M and outside the Football Club. I'm a newly elected councillor and cabinet member and in my short time since the election in May, I've been impressed by some of the creative work and initiatives carried out by our council. However, I've become more aware of the challenges we face. Some of the facts that I've been presented with during the various meetings and briefings that I have attended are as follows. The life expectancy in our borough is lower than the national average. Redcar and Cleveland were ranked 62 out of 319 local authorities with regards to deprivation. We are the eighth most deprived in terms of employment deprivation. 35.4% of children in Redcar and Cleveland are living below the poverty line. The majority of these are from working families. There has been a 27% increase in adults reported missing from home. 90% of these cases are first-time cases. Many believed to be caused by mental health issues linked to stress caused by the cost of living crisis. None of this is acceptable. The people of our borough deserve better. It's our responsibility as elected councillors to work towards changing these facts and statistics. And part of that responsibility is making difficult choices and prioritising where the council budget's spent. So although I support the idea of having extra free parking in Gisborne and the wider borough, that is why I second the amendment that any request for this is sent back to Tees Valley Combined Authority. I hope other members see fit to support this amendment too.
Thank you. I can't allow Bill Phillips to come back at this stage, but I'm going to invite councillor Philip Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have a motion before us and an amendment, both of which have flaws within them. And councillor Hanaway has drawn our attention to some of them. So it's very difficult indeed to actually support either. However, I think the principle that has been brought before us to have a discussion on and to evaluate is very clear. What is also clear is that this authority does not have the money. So whatever principles might be promulgated and whatever points may be made by either side so far in the discussion about the political framework and the environmental framework and the social health framework of this country and particularly this borough, they do not relate to the essence of the motion. What simply is there is. We had a system, it was put in place by an authority, that authority has withdrawn the funding. So the easiest way, Mr Mayor, to address this is to go back to the original aworder. They have our money. We can encourage them to spend it on our behalf. So what I would do, I would encourage the proposer and second of the motion to consider the amendment and to accept the amendment and therefore retain the motion. Because what is at stake here is not a divisive discussion within this chamber, but it's about attempting to retain a framework that could easily be done by revisiting the budget of the Combined Authority. So I would urge the proposers to accept the amendment and if they do, I will support it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo a bit what councillor Thompson's just said. I think he spoke very eloquently, as he normally does in this council chamber, whereas I tend to be a bit more different. So how many times does this council have to go cap in hand to the TVCA? How many times does this council have to go cap in hand to government before we get funded properly? I think as a councillor, I support free parking across Redcar and Cleveland and with that, I support the amendment, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Well, I must say that I am the least cynical person that I know. And we thought it was a reasonable request to bring to council today to look at how we might continue to fund something that is so important for our local communities and our local business. And I maintain that it is a small investment to make in the town, in Gisborne, that so often feels short-changed by the local authority. And I am not disagreeing with a number of people who've said today that we need to invest in growth and we need to take account of what not investing in the free parking might result in. Ultimately, the loss of business, the loss of business rates and downwards we go. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kerr. Can we now vote on the amendment, please? Right, the amendment is carried. The amendment now becomes the standard of motion. Does anybody wish to speak on it?
Attention account of council. In these times, we all face a cost of living crisis. We're all facing that, and small businesses require all the help they can get. I realise that. Although my overwhelming feeling reading the original motion is a bit an embarrassment, really. It's the worst type of political shenanigans. The type of thing that brings politics and politicians into disrepute. That's all of us, really. You know, trying to lay the blame for car parking charges on this Labour administration when it's clearly down to withdrawal of support from the Tees Valley mayor. Isn't that shameful, really? This motion's simply political. This is Simon Clarke in grave danger of losing his seat. Touched wood. Wanting to fight the general election on local issues, no wonder, given the cost of living disaster, the failures in health and social care, the PPE debacle and so forth, I could go on. Don't get me started on his continued support for the Liz Truss approach to economics. But here's not the place for that type of thing. This chamber's not the place to promote Simon's divisive politics, plain politics with our Redcur and Cleveland residents. Shocking. It's all so disingenuous, I think. Local authorities' budgets in places like Redcur and Cleveland have been squeezed, they've been slashed by the Tory government over the last 13 years. They've been the front line for austerity. That's simply euphemism for cuts. Cuts for communities like ours who are in most need. Cuts which have real impacts on residents' lives in areas like ours. As an authority, we've lost almost half our staff. The Revenue Support Grant has been decimated. Ten years ago, it accounted for half our revenue income, about £60 million. In the recently approved final accounts, the Revenue Support Grant was 7.7 million. That's an 87% cut in central government funding. Every year, this authority's ability to provide much-needed support for residents. This amounts to a reduction, a cut of tens of millions of pounds every year. This is an environment when service costs are ballooning due to inflation and increase in demand. Our aging community means the costs of supporting elderly and vulnerable adults is increasing. The costs of looked-after children is also getting, expanding dramatically. I recall 10 years ago being shocked when the number of looked-after children in Redcur and Cleveland increased to 100. In, in these times of so-called austerity, with the cuts, we now find Redcur and Cleveland Borough Council responsible for over 300 children. It was over 500 in January. That's a massive social cost to our community. It's also an annual cost, at an annual cost of £250,000 each on average, we're told. A significant burden on the authority's finances. Meeting these mandatory obligations accounted for over two-thirds of last year's revenue budget. Recent projections in the papers suggest over 80% of this year's revenue budget will be accounted for by adult and children's services. And in the forthcoming year, I think, we said, we're faced with a £6 million budget shortfall. It's therefore going to be very difficult for Redcur and Cleveland Borough Council to front, fund £340 million from the limited budget. So I suggest this petition's redirected to, to those who continue to, uh, to those who could continue to support free parking, to those with the funds available to do so. Something we welcome at this time when all household budgets, as I say, are strained and local businesses are under pressure. Let's send this petition to the Tees Valley mayor, or better still, to central government. Perhaps Simon Clarke can exert some power there. So I move this amendment. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I fully support the amendment. So I'm a ward councillor for the Gisborough Ward, which we're talking about, so some of the items I might say on here will be a bit outdated, but so it begins the preliminary warm-up before the general election. I fully support the amendment. I have to, as the majority of the car parks in this motion are in the Gisborough Ward, which I represent. I will point out the following, though. I have not signed the petition, as I will not be duped or have my arm twisted behind my back or be manipulated by the local MPs' political tactics. Earlier this year, I wrote to the TVCA, and they told me in no uncertain terms, the subsidy will end on the 31st of May this year. This situation is well documented. We set the budget for this authority on the 23rd of February this year, and nothing was said about replacing the car parking subsidy, and it was actually voted and agreed by the two Conservative councillors representing wards in Gisborough. A bit of a contradiction, I may add. So why bring the subject after the budget was set? There was plenty of time before this meeting for the MP to state his case. The cost each year to subsidise the free two-year short-stay car park in Gisborough is about £103,000 per year. So if you double that for the two-year subsidy, that'll take it to £206,000. If Redcur and other areas are similar, then of course there's going to be a deficit of about £400,000 over the two years. The MP... Is he here? As stated, we can easily overcome this deficit by various means. I would like to know how this can be done without placing the burden on local residents, and perhaps he should answer this question. Central government is well-known to have pillaged the local authorities' funds, much to the detriment of the services that we are trying to supply to residents. The MP's answer, knowing this, was to say that the government's given local authorities special dispensation to increase the council tax by 5%. I thought that one of the Prime Minister's pledges was to halve inflation, not to add to it. Already mentioned about this is that this is the same MP who backed Liz Truss, who crashed and burned the economy within her six weeks of office. Perhaps this is where the MP learnt his lesson about economics. I understand that a similar subsidy was also given to Redcur, but their local MP, who was actually here, which is good to see, has shown no similar political tactics. This petition is divisive, and it splits communities, and he knows that, and that's why he's done this. So I will support the amendment, but be aware, what goes around, comes around. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Mary Orange.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wasn't going to speak, but welcome to the real world, whether we like it or not. We are in a political arena. It has maybe been more overtly political, but we get our funding from central government. We get our dribs and drabs of money in adult services and social care, et cetera, et cetera, by handouts that come along the way, and you're grateful when they come along. Sometimes you have precious time to decide what you need to do with them. You've got to act quickly. And the TVCA is, the Combined Authority, is one of these examples. And I just think it's short-sighted to have stopped it at the point it has. And I will be supporting because all of our businesses across the borough need as much help as they could get. It will be costly, but I would like to see equality, but I will be supporting the business in Gisborne and supporting the motion. I'll be back. Thank you.
If there's no more else to speak, and there are no more speakers on the list, we'll now go to the vote, please. All those in favour? The amended motion is now carried. So that's complete. The quarterman.
My highways report is the annual update on the progress over the past year, as well as setting out current issues and future plans. There have been a few additions to the portfolio. It now controls fleet, as well as fleet maintenance, public rights of way, and the alligating scheme, both of which I have requested to oversee, and are set out on page 28. As standard, there are a number of statutory and frontline services as listed under 1.2 on page 23. For those who are listening without the report, these services include highways and engineering, strategic transport, parking strategy, concessionary travel, arrangements structures, street lighting, flooding and drainage, coastal management, and engineering projects. The bulk of funding for the department comes through the Department of Transport, the DFT, and through prudential borrowing as set out in tables on pages 27 and 28. The DFT Capital Works Award comes through the city region's sustainable transport settlement via the TVCA. This grant funding used to be received annually, but is now on a five-year block, ending in 26, 27. This gives the department more certainty, and it's not, but it's not inflationary, so the amount will be impacted by rising operational and material costs over the period. The potential borrowing picks up the shortfall. Already, we can see the department is not receiving enough from the DFT funding to be able to carry out its work. I will be writing to the DFT to request adequate funding that removes the need to borrow. It is anticipated that prudential borrowing taken out a couple of years ago will last for about another three years, short of any unfunded emergencies. There's also the topical issues surrounding the department that we've had to react to since taking on the administration, i.e. the changes to the Areva bus services and the ending of the two-hour free car parking, and I'll come back to these shortly. Coming into the department, it was clear there had been some staffing issues over the last 12 months, which has affected morale. Pressure from unfilled vacancies has affected existing staff who have been covering. The difficulty is in recruiting staff to specialist roles. We need to promote the council and the borough more positively if we're going to attract the best staff and engineers. Thankfully, a number of posts are now filled, as set out on page 23. We currently have four highways inspectors, however, I'm looking to increase this to five to complement future plans, which I'll come on to. I have ensured within the report that our team's work for the last year and the programme ahead is laid out for your information and commendation over the pages 24 and 27. These men and women work extremely hard in all weathers, day and night, resurfacing, gritting, repairing, and maintaining our roads, drainage, coastline, and infrastructure. I'm continually bowled over by their work and have nothing but praise for the department and the work they have done and the work they are going to do. I think it's probably pertinent to cover more of the topical items happening today, namely the parking and the bus services. Bus services are on page 29 and 31. Along with the two-hour free parking offer, the settlement for bus services decided on by the TVCA was also something that came to a natural end just before the local election. As the region's statutory transport authority, the TVCA negotiates a settlement to reimburse all local bus operators for concessionary pass holders. This is then paid for by us, the local authority. During Covid, when transport stopped and was later controlled, we were encouraged by the government to continue paying bus operators at pre-Covid levels, despite the significant reduction in passenger numbers. In 2022-23, the TVCA agreed to transition back to the actual numbers of passengers travelling. Go North East and Castage Cove agreed to the settlement, protecting most of their routes. Areva stated they'd be worse off. It's fair to say Areva are subject to more difficult, to a more difficult market, with reduced passenger numbers, increased costs, and while government financial support for operators has been reducing. Areva made a commercial decision to cut services from the 9th of July, citing low patronage and loss of income and from concessionary fares. The TVCA, in my opinion, have made, have made a fair offer based on evidence and government guidance. Local authorities are not in a position to continue funding at the higher level, and it has to stop. Areva have requested a tribunal hearing into the concessionary fare offer, though, through the Department of Transport. We have asked the TVCA how long this might take, but there's no timescale over these hearings. The bus services affected by this are available digitally via a link in the report under section four on page 31. I won't go into the multiple services disrupted. It is all disappointing for the TVCA, Redcur and Cleveland, and for the many users losing their services. But I will say thank you to the officers who have patiently gone backwards and forwards for over a month, still are negotiating over the many asks that I've had on behalf of you councillors and your requests. And those negotiations, in part, have been fruitful with the introduction of the East Cleveland Bus Service and the extension to the Tees Flex. The situation is always ongoing. There's been another meeting today, and we're still talking about routes with the TVCA, and we will continue to work with them and the bus operators to find the best outcome. Moving on to car parking on page 31, 32, discussed. TVCA decision not to continue funding the two-hour free parking was dropped in my lap the minute I became the portfolio holder. I acknowledged the petition and the motion debate that followed, and I'm glad that we've come to a decision on that. I'll quickly touch on, though, what we have done to look at the possibilities and what I'm doing because of this action. When, when I was briefed on this decision, I had several asks. How much would it cost to replicate the offer? How much for one hour instead of two? Can we increase visitor parking charges to offset the free parking for residents? And can we increase parking charges in long-stay car parks to offset the offer in short-stay car parks? And so it went on, and the answers came back. To continue with the free parking offer as present would cost £235,000 per year, out of the question. To offer one hour free parking would cost £188,000 per year. The majority of short-stay parkers will only stay for that first hour, also out of the question. To offer residents free parking but to charge visitors full amount is untried but technically possible. It would require investment in new parking machine functionality and comes with revenue loss. Total first year cost £440,000. Year, yearly running cost £326,000, and that doesn't include software. Again, it's not feasible. Scarborough and York, however, amongst others, offer discounted parking on the same basis. This, again, it has potential, but it's long-term and also requires more studying. And to vary the short and long-stay charges, which could benefit residents more, is also possible, but in the long run, and there is a limit to what is deemed as reasonable. The only immediate option we have is to reintroduce parking charges following a TRO consultation, which would take about three months to do. But I've been holding off on this decision, and I've asked officers to keep going backwards and forwards to the TVA, TVCA, to rethink this. Hopefully, following the motion, there will be more clarity as to the direction. With all this in mind, I recognise the need to future plan and modernise parking and parking charges in Redcur and Cleveland that support our residents and our local businesses to increase capacity and quality and to get Redcur and Cleveland into a position where it can make similar, similar and perhaps better offers as in York and Scarborough. However, if this is the However, if this is to happen, it will take time. Reckon Cleveland parking setup and system requires radical change and more advanced technology to handle data efficiently. Ultimately, my intention is to review and create a new parking strategy for completion over the next three to four years. And I'm tasking the highways and transport department to help me realise this long-term plan. A plan that puts our residents first, provides the department increased revenue through visitor parking, increases parking capacity, improves residential parking and parking permit use, increases reliable EV points, and supports local business and a growing economy. I hope the outline of these plans can be ready within my first one hundred days with the portfolio. True devolution is being in control at this level and not having to accept temporary handouts. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Quartermaine. And I'm now followed by question-answer session, which must relate to the matters within the report. Councillor Mayorhunns.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I did not realise I would be up first again. It's quite a brief and direct question, because we've got a lot to get through. It's regarding points three point eight and four point two, and the withdrawal of certain services by Areva from the ninth of July. Could I ask what is the position with Areva buses regarding some service provision to areas which have been excluded from the ninth of July? And being in my own West Ike Ward, in particular the sixty-two, which serves Ings Road and Castle Road, an area where there are significant proportion of elderly and disabled people, and they will become socially isolated. Expecting them to walk to Redcar Lane or Borough Road is not possible. And we are yet awaiting the outcome of any Tees Flex buses. But again, perhaps people don't want to be dragged into the app era, and it's quite difficult. Those are the very people who are more vulnerable, and I do have great concerns for them. And not all of them can afford to pay for a taxi. It seems quite a wealthy area, but in reality, many people who are left single household are quite struggling. So I'd be grateful if we know what is happening in that area, because I know you've been negotiating, and we appreciate what's going on. But I would hate to see these people permanently excluded. And I know we're not the other areas. There are other areas throughout the borough who have had their services withdrawn. And there doesn't always seem to be a rationale for it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Quartermaine.
Am I doing these one at a time, Mr. Mayor? Yes, thank you, councillor, for your question, and I totally appreciate where you're coming from. The sixty-two in particular, you know, it's all disappointing, losing these bus services. But the sixty-two in particular, are we talking about the Sunday service?
Too much, but Sunday services and the loss of the eighty-one going from Redcar to Gisborne, I could go on and on, because sometimes that bus was absolutely chock-a. And as I say, I don't always understand the rationale behind their moves. But yes, we could broaden it, and I know a lot of services have been stopped after six o'clock as well. There might be some increase in East Cleveland in some areas, but it's not universal. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, councillor. And you're right, it's not ideal, and we know that, you know, there's been a lot of disruption across a lot of services there. And the sixty-two, as you say, in particular, the eighty-one, and some of the X services, we're heavily trying to negotiate there to get the extra funding. You know, what it is, Areva say that, you know, there's red lines there because it's just not commercially viable anymore. The sixty-two, I believe, went over the threshold of per passenger per head, which was something like six pound per head or something. It was one that we particularly wanted to try and to keep in stated, because we know that the usage was so strong. I understand there was something like twenty-six thousand people used it within the year. And because it kind of, it carries a route that goes right down the middle of our borough, it would be something that we would want to try and retain. As I say, negotiations continually go on, but that is one I know that they have knocked on the head, but we can keep going back. You know, in the long term, there's opportunities there, I think. You know, we're looking at Stagecoach and Go North East, et cetera, East Cleveland buses. You know, I don't think we should be held to ransom on these bus services. It's really important that our people get to where they need to get to, get to their medical appointments, get to their jobs. You know, we've got to keep this place working, so it's really important that we still continually go on as we go throughout, looking at these routes. And, you know, it's not just in Redcar, of course, and Kirkletham, it's all the way across. I was having a conversation earlier with the Skinning Grove councillor, Barry Hunt there, about the fact that their buses aren't going through Skinning Grove anymore. You know, this is just unacceptable. So, you know, we need to keep going back to the table and keep going at them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alec Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just thank Carl for all his hard work over the last month? It's been an absolute baptism of fire for Carl. Car parking and buses, and the buses was the real concern. Again, just alluding to your report, I think if we go back to the previous motion and about our stances in administration, Carl clearly in his report backed the TVCA and backed what they were doing in terms of the subsidy difference. And that's the mindset of this administration. We want to do the very best for our residents.
Councillor Brown.
On that, Carl, can I ask you, councillor Hunt sort of rugby tackled you as you were walking down the corridor, and I know councillor Earl and McKeer as well, for all very concerned in East Cleveland. Can you commit to working with the councillors, particularly of the East Cleveland, where there's people feeling marooned, to bridge this gap between the traffic commissioner? Can you make a pledge to them to continue to try and, you know, do our very best for these residents feeling marooned?
Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you, councillor Brown. And yes, I'm used to getting rugby tackled. I used to be a winger, actually, so I used to be able to avoid them. Not so much these days. But yeah, absolutely, we are committed, and we will continue. As I say, this is an ongoing thing. This doesn't stop here. You know, we've got to keep fighting. And yeah, I know what you're saying, particularly the Skinning Grove councillors, but absolutely everybody who's affected by that, keep coming back to the department. I'll keep raising those issues, and we'll keep fighting for this borough.
Councillor Bill Clark.
Well, thanks very much again, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for you, Carl. I'm not sure if you know that parking in this borough is a bit of a hot topic at the moment. And I don't know if you know as well that in Gisborne at the moment, we're still rather lucky to have two, three hours parking in the short-stay car parks, which I don't know if you know, was subsidized by the TVCA till the thirty-first of May. Can you tell me when and if it's going to happen that we will start to see charges occur in these car parks in the future, if we can't get any more subsidies from the TVCA or the MP comes up with a golden handshake of some kind? Because obviously, there's no date at the moment, and I would if you'd just assist in that, please. Thank you.
Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you, councillor, and thank you for enlightening me on the issue around car parks. What I can say is this, you know, I've held off on this decision, you know. The councillors are paying for these car parks at the moment, but I've held off on this decision because we've been going backwards and forwards to the TVCA, imploring on them to continue this. With this motion as well, that's going to wing its way back to the TVCA, and hopefully that will give them proof of thought as well. I will hold off until I get more information back on that. If it comes to the point where we do have to reintroduce charges, we have to put in a TRO. That would take normally about three months. So I'm expecting maybe we might have to put that in August, so maybe about November. I think, I was thinking about this the other day, actually. We've got Christmas coming up, and people might go, whoa, hang on, you know, you've got Christmas. But I also think after Christmas is a really vulnerable time. And if that TRO kicks in in January, actually, that might affect the businesses more. So there's some thinking to do around that, and I'll take my advice with the officers. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. I've got five more councillors speaking, so I'll carry on. But after Philip Thompson, I won't be taking any more. Craig Hanaway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Quartermaine, and best of luck with the new role. I think you've got your work cut out for you. There were some parts of the report where I was looking for more detail, particularly on the projects that highways has undertaken. But I also wondered if I was looking for more detail, because it's so hard to get information out of highways officers the rest of the time. You know, if we have a meeting about Saltburn, and we have a range of officers from different departments, it always seems to be the highways officer that isn't there. Or take the example of the Saltburn Transport Master Plan, which we're going to be discussing very soon. Thank you for that. You know, it was supposed to be with ward councillors last August. We finally got it a few days before Christmas. And then after Christmas, there was a private discussion among officers which didn't include us, where they considered not publishing it at all. And one of the officers said to us, oh, we see it as more of an ideas document now. Well, you know, fifty thousand pounds would be a lot of money to pay for an ideas document. And obviously, we were very disturbed by that, because it seemed as if we were completely left out, you know, of decision-making. So I trust you will help them to become more communicative. Also, I'd just like to mention one incident, which, and I mention it so that you might have a look at the emergency service as well. Because one night, I think it was about six months ago, I saw a photo on Facebook of a sinkhole that had opened up just round the corner from me. It was literally six feet in diameter and four feet deep. And I phoned the emergency number, and the answer that I got, and they were a bit rude to me, was that they could not possibly send anyone out that night, not till the next morning. They said, well, is the road quiet?
Can I remind you, councillor, this is a question-and-answer session on the portfolio?
Yes, it's only the risk to life and limb that makes me mention it, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, so they couldn't come till the next morning, and I told them that, you know, it could be very dangerous, so perhaps that's something you could look into as well.
Thank you. Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you, councillor, for your questions. Yes, the Saltburn Master Plan, again, another thing that's kind of been dropped into my lap, and I've been playing catch-up, but I've caught up now. And we will be having that meeting on Tuesday, I think it's three o'clock, with all the ward councillors to discuss the implementation of that plan. Again, we've heard real testimonies today about our funding position within this council. The Saltburn Master Plan comes through external funding, and so we need to have a look at the parameters of it. In relation to the emergency service, I didn't know about this. If you can see me afterwards, I'll have a chat with you. Thank you.
Councillor Leroyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, councillor Quartermaine. I have a quick question with regards to the eighty-one and sixty-two services. So one of these services, the eighty-one, as a reminder, this runs around the Masca Estate. It runs right to the top, which is about a mile away from where you can catch another bus. The sixty-two is important, because even though it runs into Longback, you can get off, and councillor Myers has recognised this, that you can get off on Redcar Road, and then you can access the rest of Masca from there. Now, with regards to these two services, I emailed the Tees Valley Combined Authority. I have to say this to the mayor. The mayor does always get back, does the Tees Valley mayor, when you email him, no matter which political persuasion, so he's to be congratulated on that. In fact, he got back to me straight away on the email of twenty-third, and it says this here. In fact, he gets back to me, but when I asked for an investigation into the Tees Valley Combined Authority, and I emailed councillor Brown, he didn't get back. But anyway, it says in this email, "I would encourage anyone with concerns on the service reductions to contact Areva directly. I would encourage you to ask them why they have rejected a settlement in the many, many millions of pounds." So what I would like to know is, is that true? So that's the first question. And then the second, because I want to know exactly, understand this, like where the problem lies. Is it with the Deutsche Bahn-owned German company, you know, Areva, or is it elsewhere? And then the next, the next point I've got is that carbon is mentioned twice in your report. So it talks about the efforts that we're making for carbon reduction. But what I would like to know is, well, I'd like a bit more concrete detail on what's happening with regards to carbon reduction, because obviously, transport's a big contributor to that. Thank you.
Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you for your questions, councillor Leroyd. And yeah, the eighty-one and the sixty-two are as important as all the other services that we're losing. I can't speak for Lord Houchin and his advice that he's offered you. I think what he's trying to press on you is that we all have a part to play in this, and the more pressure we put on Areva, maybe they'll change their mind. I can't see that happening. They've already said it's commercially unviable. I think really, I mean, as the TVCA negotiate the deals on our behalf, it's really down to the TVCA to keep going back. As we will, we'll keep going back to the TVCA and to the bus operators to do what we can to try and get them to hopefully change their minds. I can't see it happening. So we're going to have to have a longer plan, I think, and look at a new strategy. But yeah, I would say, you know, in my opinion, keep going back to the TVCA, keep coming back to us as well, you know, and we'll be pushing that forward as well through the officers, who, like I said, you know, have been absolutely amazing. They've just been going backwards and forwards on every ask. Regarding who runs Areva, I really don't know. I've no idea who runs Areva. If it's a German company, I'll take that lesson. Nope, not a problem at all. In terms of the carbon issues, and I mean, we've obviously got our commitment to reducing carbon, our carbon footprint for two thousand and thirty. It's not something we've, I've gone into in depth at the moment with the directorate. It's something that we need to talk about. I mean, I've got a question a bit later on, I'll think about you, Les. I won't answer that now, but it's coming up. And again, you know, apart from our commitment to two thousand and thirty, it hasn't really come into the conversation too much. I brought it up in my speech, but it's a bit of a throwaway remark at this moment. We need a bit more detail, so I will be going into that in a lot more detail. And I'm quite happy for all councillors to get involved with that conversation.
Councillor Nightingale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the report. I just wonder whether you would like to comment on some of the remarks I'm going to make? That's my question. Maybe in some of the services that we've got, we should be lazing with middle preparatory council because we've got some particular problems in our area. But councillor Donoghue and I were the representatives of the council at the Tees Valley Combined Authority scrutiny meeting about a fortnight ago. And there was a presentation on transport, which included information about parking. And it was on that occasion that the mayor did actually say to the Labour members there, "Stop playing silly bookers." So maybe that might be his response to the motion that we just put forward. What was also mentioned was that, this is a comment by the mayor, there's a Areva not interested in partnership working.
I have got a question, dear councillor.
Would you agree that that is the case? He also said that it is not for, it is not for public authorities to subsidize a public transport, bus transport, public transport. So would you agree that if we are to have a bus service and a complete network, it is absolutely vital for environmental reasons, for reasons of getting people about the borough and so forth, who can't afford car transport, that we do actually have some sort of arrangement? This would probably be nationally. But do you agree that the idea of the service that we have at the moment is not a bus service?
Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you, councillor, for your question. And yeah, I think, you know, I've said it in my report there, you know, we've got Go North East, we've got Stagecoach. North East, we've got Stagecoach, who agreed the settlement and managed to keep over the majority of their routes. It was only Areva that came back and said it'd be worse off. And I accepted the fact that they've got more difficult market forces going on. They also rely on subsidies from the government for other parts of the operation, which are reducing. But it is disappointing. I'm disappointed in Areva. I'm more disappointed in Areva than I am with the TVCA. I think the TVCA have been working hard, along with us, to try and get those negotiations working. And they've just been resistant on all these things. You know, a red line for the 62 bus for me was, you know, we absolutely rely on that service, you know, so, and it was, it looked fruitful to me on paper, so, but anyway, that's by the by. But you know, what you're saying about operating, us operating the bus services, if you like, you know, you won't say that. Right. My point is this, you know, we rely on the TVCA, we rely on that level of devolution, and I think we should rely on this level of devolution on this, within this borough. We call the shots. We provide the services. We go and do the negotiations directly. To have to go between is a little bit difficult, and you constantly seem to be going cap in hand, you know, and it doesn't really work for me. Okay.
Councillor Barry Hunt.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I did tackle you, and I was very impressed by, before you hit the floor, how you'd been on your phone and arranging an urgent meeting. So on behalf of Broton Ward councillors, I'd like to thank you on that. I mean, the point of Skinning Grove is, when the Areva stopped coming into there, that actually gave us no bus at all out of Skinning Grove to anywhere. If we didn't have the little link bus that we just wanted to, that was just started, we wouldn't have anything. The only problem is, as I've explained to you, the link bus only goes halfway up. But I am very thankful for your immediate action that you've done and all in this meeting, and let's get it solved. My question is, I can remember years ago, we used to have regular meetings with Areva, and been to a few at different places. Could you please ensure that we start having regular meetings with these bus services, so they can't just drop things on residents like that? Because the people in Skinning Grove, because of that one bus not coming in, they couldn't get to the doctors, the chemists, the dentists, all up at the top end of the lofters. And I think that's very important to the public, you know, because a lot of people can't get off at the bottom and walk up. So on behalf of the Broton Ward councillors, we thank you. Could you ensure that we get right into Areva and other bus companies' ribs, because they just seem to rule the room? They just say profit, and that's it. So thank you very much. That's my question.
For your questioning compliments. And we will have that meeting, and I'll answer that as soon as possible, because I understand, you know, the situation that you're in down in Skinning Grove, you know, it's quite a way out of the way, if you know what I mean. In relation to the Areva question, you know, this is the issue that we've got. We're in a situation of devolution, where we're answerable, or we rely on the TVCA. So we go back to the TVCA constantly, and they negotiate on our behalf. They're legally, lawfully, through the government, that's how it works. They do the negotiations for us, we pay the bill, and that's it. So it's, you know, I know what you're saying about the old days, we talked to Areva or, you know, whatever company, we just don't do that anymore, you know. I don't believe that's how the setup is. But yeah, we continually keep going back to the TVCA and continually be asking for these services. And, you know, if we can't get them from Areva, you know, maybe we'll get them from somewhere
Councillor Philip Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Quartermaine, for your report. I've got three questions. One on page 25, an area we're all excited about, and that is gully cleansing. Now, in your report, you write, "The gully sucker operates a rolling programme, and once all areas are covered in each district, the programme repeats. The programme to ensure the gullies are cleansed at least twice per annum." Well, there are many gullies in Saltburn, and I'm sure elsewhere in the borough, that have not been cleaned in five years or more. So whoever is giving you this guidance, please go back to them and ask for a refresh of their databases. And please ensure, if you can, that the gullies in Saltburn are latterly given priority over clearly others that have been given priority in the borough. We do not want priority, all we wish is a fair share of the cleansing. My second point refers to parking, which you did say quite a lot about. Parking charges appear sometimes out of nowhere. There has been little member consultation on parking charges in recent years. How they're levied, or even the amounts raised from individual car parks, and I can appreciate very much the concern expressed by the introducers of the motion this afternoon about how they felt disengaged from the process. So I'm going to seek to have the scrutiny system look into parking charges, so that we can have an all-member engagement in the understanding of the provisions, the legislative requirements, and what we can do as members to influence within our own areas. And my third point relates to Christmas lights, which you mentioned, and the cost of the renewal. I would simply advise that the process in Saltburn over the last 30 years has been to raise all the money for all the Christmas lights from residents and sponsors. And I would advocate that you consider using this model.
Councillor Quartermaine.
Thank you, councillor, for your questions. In terms of the report and the gully cleaning, I feel likely to say, like, if you don't like what was happening in the past, it's somebody else's fault. You know, I was driving lorries around the country, and, but I'm back now, and I've got two hands on the wheel of this portfolio. So in terms of that part of the report, I will go back to officers, and I will ask them where we are in that programme of cleaning. And I assure you that we will go back and look at Saltburn, as we will everywhere else. The parking, yeah, in terms of the parking, you're going to take that back to scrutiny? I'm quite happy for you to do that. Just be mindful that I am going to be looking at a brand-new parking strategy for the borough, and I will be including all members in that. I want to hear all of your voices, because I don't live in every part of the borough, so we need to understand how that works. In terms of Christmas lights, yes, I'll totally applaud any fundraising that we can get. We are in a difficult position with Christmas lights. It seems like a throwaway thing, but, you know, it always brings delight in December when we see decorations up, and our decorations have looked tired for quite a long time. You know, maybe there's other ways of doing it with lighting, et cetera. Again, I'm open to suggestion, and my door's open with that, but I will be discussing Christmas lights with the officers. It seems like now is probably the best time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Quartermaine, for your report and all the questions. That concludes that section. We now come to the Department of Members. It's been circulated into councillor Paul Salvin to replace councillor Kurt Pew as the main representative on TVCA overview and scrutiny council. Can this be agreed? Show your hands in favour. It's agreed. Now it comes to section 12. We've got 11 questions from members of the council, which I'm going to take. In this section, you've got two minutes to ask the question, and the respondent member gets five minutes to reply. Because of the length of questions, can we stick to that if possible, please? Question one from councillor Thompson.
Chair, I am reluctant not to read the question out, but I'm conscious of time. So I will take the question as read.
Councillor Burke.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Thompson. With regards to the delegated powers referred by the chief constable was actually in regards to the community safety accredited scheme. The scheme delegates authority from the chief constable to issue fines for offences such as excluded pupil, pupils in public spaces, cyclone footpaths, dog fouling, kafiki and dog control, et cetera. The Public Space Protection Order, which is the subsequent legislation, has enabled local authorities to issue fines for similar issues, mainly dog control, fly tipping, public urination and closure orders. They are currently in the region of 40 powers available to use under the scheme. However, we are already utilising 20 by the use of PSPOs and other legislation. Community safety and enforcement have considered additional powers, which I not yet currently held, and we will review these powers not currently adopted. However, any consideration of increasing available powers must be commensurate with the number of delegated officers available to enforce these powers. I can confirm that we are currently discussing the use of these powers relating to antisocial behaviour with Cleveland Police and the Crime Commissioner, but again, this has been considered along with the application and resource available to carry out any enforcement.
I do have. So my question is, in order to continue the quest to improve neighbourhood policing, will an invitation be extended to the chief constable to return to Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council and continue the dialogue with elected members?
I could certainly look at extending that invitation sort of now. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. That comes to question two, a question, councillor Thompson again to councillor Richardson.
Again, Mr Mayor, I would ask that the question be taken as read.
Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Thompson. The cliff lift is in the process of being transferred to my portfolio. I don't actually get it till the 1st of September, but I have asked and received initial figures to look at. I've asked that our report starts on the 1st of September, and we need to decide the perimeter and aims of that report. I plan to visit again and consult ward members over the summer. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson, do you have a supplementary?
Chair, I'm not quite sure if that actually answered my question, but I'm understanding of the sentiment that was expressed in the reply. I was given an assurance at the last council meeting, and it is recorded in page 10, that the team would be looking into my request for a business plan appraisal and detailed, and they would be getting back to me. They have not got back to me. So it is encouraging that the new portfolio holder is expecting to have discussions in September. But discussions in September do not relate to the promise that I was given in April. So I just ask that the new system expedite the request and the promise that was made previously, because this, and this is the question, Chair, the cliff lift is such an important part of everybody's life, particularly in the borough, and it's really important that this is going to be addressed. So I welcome the reply. Thank you.
Councillor Richardson.
Do I answer that? So that promise was from the other department of the last council, and I share your frustrations that it didn't happen. So, you know, you can be assured that it will happen as soon as possible. Thanks.
Okay. Question three, councillor Leroyd to councillor Brown.
Mayor, the first question is, does the council leader still support net zero carbon emissions in the borough by 2030?
Councillor Brown.
I think the easiest thing to say would be no, but I absolutely do. Just on that, rather than sort of just consuming what the officers had sent to me, I asked a few questions around that, because I, and I know we made that pledge back in 2019, and since then, we've done a really good job. We've dropped over, well, just under 6,000 tonnes of carbon, just by the end of 2022, 2023, we had. But obviously, I was part of the administration where we first started discussing the Waste Management Centre and the incinerator. So what I did is, I just double-checked with officers that plans of future-proofing around was being able to still deliver the 2030 pledge had been made. And I've been assured through things like carbon offsetting, the carbon capture, and the other plans around it, that that will still be the case. So I can stand here confidently in front of you and say, yes, I do still pledge the 2030 zero carbon emissions. Yeah, there's my answer.
Do you have a second, a supplementary question?
Yes, and it alludes to the 20th of July, the household waste incinerator with a carbon output greater than the borough combined was narrowly approved, reluctantly approved, has to be said, via reserve matters. The incinerator was originally planned, as councillor Brown has said, to have carbon capture technology from the outset, but it now emit millions of tonnes of carbon. Now, I ask these questions, not because I'm political game player, but because I'm genuinely an environmentalist. I come here on my bike, I attempt to be a vegan and so on. So it fulfils the carbon net zero 2030 promise. Will the council leader commit to either delaying the project to the point where carbon capture is available, making sure it's closed circuit, removing, and this is important, removing the monetary incentive to burn increasing volumes and household waste, driving up recycling rates across the north to reduce the amount that would be burnt, and the years with the government to get this job properly done?
Councillor Brown.
Right, I don't commit to delaying the project, because we've gone through five years of many discussions and many hoops, and we spent a lot of money. But what I do commit to, councillor Leroyd, is further discussions with yourself, the officers, about how we mitigate some of your concerns. There's no magic wand here. I mean, the alternatives, I mean, some of the points I've been provided with are the alternatives currently at landfill. Now, we're talking about 450,000 tonnes of waste going to landfill that couldn't be recyclable. Recyclable rates are very important to me, and we were 40% under the last Labour administration. I'm not getting political, but they're currently at 25%, so we've seen a major drop over the last four, five years. And we're having conversations on that, on we improve that. So I'm not going to commit to delaying the waste, because the consequences of 450,000 tonnes going to landfill far outweighs the carbon emissions that the incinerator or the Waste Management Centre, whatever you want to call it, would give. However, I do commit to having real conversations, getting round the table about how we future-proof our 2030 pledge.
Next question is question four from councillor Salvin to councillor Quartermaine.
Yeah, it's quite simple, really. Does this council support a ULEZ-style policy being rolled out in Redcar and Cleveland? And for those that don't know what ULEZ is, it's Ultra Law Emissions Zone.
Councillor Quartermaine.
Councillor, for your question, the short answer is no. I mean, obviously, this is, the ULEZ is operational in London, and London has its own problems. In this area, it's not deemed...
In this area, it's not deemed rationale to have a ULAS style um policy. Um, I've got a longer answer if you want it, but if you've got a sub- I'll, I'll just read it out. Okay.
Do you have a supplementary question?
Oh, yes. Um, my only concern, though, is that Labour have introduced ULAS style schemes in Newcastle, Bradford, Sheffield and Manchester, to name but a few. Sadiq Khan is currently trying to expand the scheme in London to great opposition from the public who do not want these schemes. Will Councilor Quatermaine join the Conservatives in condemning these anti-car policies, reject the policies of Just Stop Oil, of Extinction Rebellion and pledge not to introduce any similar schemes in Redcon?
Hello.
Thank, thank you, councillor, for your question, and I can assure you, I won't be joining the Conservatives in any, in any way, shape or form. Um, what I will do, though, I, I, I will, I will write out the, the question, uh, the answer to the question in full. Okay. The council is working with the TVCA through the Tees Valley Strategic Transport Plan, delivering a suite of investment proposals which support the economy whilst migrating residents and businesses to transport that, um, that has lower carbon emissions. There does not appear to be a rationale for introducing a ULAS from a, from an air quality perspective. The council submits an annual status report to DEFRA. The most recent report in June this year covering two thousand and twenty-two sets out that the borough maintains a good quality of air, uh, air quality, good standard of air quality across the borough. The pollutants monitored remain rela- relatively static throughout two thousand and twenty-two in line with data from previous years. Continued compliance with air, uh, UK air quality objectives across Redcon Cleveland means that the declaration of an air quality management area, uh, AQMA, is not necessary and will be unlikely to be required in the coming years. Startup and operation of a ULAS requires significant investment as well as the enactment of a special TRO, Traffic Regulation Order, uh, neither of which are in place. Also, public transport and associated infrastructure would need to be at a more developed, developed level than they are currently in order to facilitate modal shift. The introduction of a ULAS, and this is the last sentence, the introduction of a ULAS would require extensive analysis and preparation to establish feasibility and local impact. I think that's quite conclusive. It wouldn't work yet. Thank you.
Question from Councilor Thompson to Councilor Richardson.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I'm going to read uh the question on this occasion, because as has just been referred to previously, this, this is a matter of singular importance to this borough. So my question reads, at the regulatory committee held on the twentieth of July twenty twenty-three, members were advised that outlying planning permission had been granted under delegated powers on the twenty-ninth of July twenty twenty for the construction of an energy from waste recovery facility. During the presentation for application to approve reserve matters relating to the construction, members were advised that the facility would not be carbon neutral until twenty forty, and the discussion on environmental emissions from the facility were not within the jurisdiction of the regulatory committee, and that fell to separate pollution control regimes. Given that, Redcon Cleveland has a declared policy to achieve carbon neutrality by twenty thirty, and that there are many continuing concerns about pollution levels resulting from emissions, can this authority make every effort to combine with its development partners to achieve, through appropriate investment and the application of rigorous procurement, carbon neutrality in line with its declared timetable, and similarly in parallel, seek to achieve a minimal emissions position at the same time?
Councilor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you, Councilor Thompson, for your question. The contract for the energy from waste facility will require ongoing reductions in emissions from the plant, which will be detailed in a carbon and environmental management plan. We don't have, haven't gone out to tender for somebody to build it yet, so we don't have that yet, but the plant's carbon capture and storage ready, which would remove substantial emissions from the site if it's able to be imple- implemented. All endeavours will be made to achieve the lowest possible emissions from the site as soon as it is possible.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
I have, uh, Mr Mayor. I understand the sentiment expressed and the aspiration indicated in the answer to my question. However, I do not think that the intention will deliver what we need to secure. So my supplementary question reads, will the cabinet member convene a meeting of all relevant partner authorities committed to this project to discuss the crucial environmental aspects of it, and to do so at the very earliest opportunity, so that no time is lost in agreeing a clear emissions standard to be required of the procurement specification?
Thank you.
Yes, we've already requested it. Okay.
Councilor Colley to Councilor Book.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll take the question as read.
Councilor Book.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you, Councilor Colley, for your question. Um, as members of this chamber are aware, that myself and officers have been working very closely with Beyond Housing to receive regular updates on their grass cutting operations and to pick up any areas that may have fallen between the two organisations. Although Beyond Housing have been very open about their responsibility and the poor standards of maintenance on their sites, the impact is generally aesthetic and therefore there are limited powers for this council to intervene should it have wished to do so. As Beyond Housing land and the authorities have put each other in a number of locations across the borough where there has been issues of spread of grass and weed seeds onto our highways, it is of course difficult to quantify this, to establish the cause of weeds in some areas that would form a basis of any claim. We will raise these concerns with Beyond Housing, although it is unlikely that any compensation will be paid to them, be paid by them to this council. In order to, in regards to compensation for, for residents, Beyond Housing have confirmed there will be some recompense for, given to tenants who currently pay service charges for their garden scheme. However, this is yet to be determined and unlikely until the new year.
No.
Next question is from Councilor Gray to Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can the leader of the council guarantee to the residents of Loftus and ward councillors that there will be no clawback of any of the hard-won combined funding for the Loftus Master Plan?
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, no, I'm spending all of Kegle Ethan. And I absolutely, uh, council agree, you can be rest assured that this administration won't clawback on any of that eleven million. And what I've also done, uh, since, since that senior question, and, and I know there's been issues in, in Loftus regarding the regeneration and the roadworks, which Councilor White's brought to my attention, is just making sure that the original funders as well, that we're not going to have any slippage in the, in the delivering of the regeneration of Loftus for you. Uh, so I'm making sure that the officers are going to deliver on time, so you don't lose any money from, from them, and you said you're not going to lose any money from me. That's the great, all right?
Councilor Gray.
Mayor, with that in mind then, would the leader accept an invitation to the Loftus Master Plan walk-around to be um, uh, accepted with other ward councillors, bearing in mind that Councilor White and myself, they won't licence premises in Loftus? Thank you.
Uh, that will not somebody's response to treating, but yes. Uh, yeah, no problem, just send me anybody and I'll get over, all right?
All right. Councilor Berry to Councilor Massey.
Thank you. It's a simple question, which I'd like to take as read.
Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the question, Councilor Berry. Um, for members who were around, and there are still a few of us in twenty eleven to twenty fifteen in that council session, you might recall that the scrutiny arrangements at this council changed at that time to be a little similar or very similar to what we have today. And at that time, the procedure where scrutiny meetings take place the week before cabinet meetings was established, and I think until very recently, that has been deemed by the majority of members to be acceptable. However, members who were here for the last four years before May will recall that we added an additional scrutiny committee to our cycle so that we now have five, and this has caused the issues that Councilor Berry outlines in his question. So in short, what we've got to do as a cabinet is try and balance, I think, the amount of time that cabinet and officers have to write reports and make sure that reports are perfect so that they go out with the scrutiny agenda papers and do not go out to follow, but also give the sufficient time for democratic scrutiny that Peter, Councilor Berry, asks for in this. So I think that although the legal notice is that we have to send out five days, five clear days in advance of the making an agenda, I know that in practice, for instance, at the last scrutiny, uh, the last set of scrutiny committees, I think the papers went out on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of June, but the first committee was actually the Monday thereafter, which gave members of the first committee of the week very little time to look into their reports. So in essence, I think, I agree with the question. So on a trial basis, we're going to try and bring forward the cycle so that you do get the papers by at least the Monday before, giving you hopefully a full week to look at them. So I agree, we'll see how it goes, Peter.
Councilor Bray. No more?
No supplementary, no. I'd like to thank Councilor Massey for his, his answer, very good.
This question is from Councilor Powley to Councilor Richardson. Councilor Powley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I found the um previous meeting on the hydrogen village very informative and interesting, and I wondered, um, what was your position on proposed hydrogen village for this borough?
Councilor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Powley, for your question. I'm not going to give my personal opinion, so, uh, and this is why Northern Gas Networks are running the trial on the behalf of the Department for Energy Security and Net Zero. The council is keen that residents in the trial area can access the information they need to reach their own decisions about choosing hydrogen or a low-carbon electrical solution to heat their home, and I wouldn't want to influence that. Thank you.
Any further question, Councilor Powley? Next question is Councilor Davis to Council, Councilor Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, um, this question is, does the leader of the council satisfied with the excuses given by Beyond Housing at the recent briefing, and if possible, will he be able to do it without a script?
Thank you, Councilor Brown.
Uh, I'll try. Uh, you weren't there, Wayne, so I'll have to update you from, from, from a script. Uh, uh, the easy answer is no, I wasn't, I wasn't. Uh, but what they did do is they took ownership, and that's what Adam and residents were looking for, they took ownership, and things, as in my perception, in terms of the grass cutting, has improved over the last couple of weeks, still yet far from perfect. Uh, but that's triggered a whole other conversations behind the scenes where I'm asking officers about future proofing residents from the same side, type, I'm not going to go into it in full council yet, but we are discussing future, future plans for how things are delivered. Okay? Uh, but no, I wasn't satisfied.
Any further question?
Uh, yes, obviously, Mr Mayor, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to um move on a little bit as well and just talk about the, the grass cutting from the council's perspective as well, because I don't think that the grass cutting from this council either has been particularly fantastic over the last few months. Um, so I just want to get a guarantee off the leader that he will um work with area, in particular with councillors from areas where grass cutting has been negligible, um, so that we can get that addressed as soon as possible, because some areas are still in, in an absolute dire state, in my opinion. Uh, so I'd like his response on that as well, please.
Councilor Brown.
I don't want to step on councillor Adam Brooks' grass, but yeah, I'll, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. I'll, I'll, I'll have oversight, definitely. Uh, I, I'm aware, we, it hasn't been perfect in all, in all patches of the borough, uh, from ourselves. It has got a little bit lost behind the fact that we're under jungles everywhere, but I still have my, my eye on the ball, as did Adam, that we fell behind ourselves, uh, so you can be rest assured you've got a guarantee that we are, and Adam has got his eye on the ball, all right?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Does the lead member agree with the government's restriction of child benefit to two children per family?
Councilor Meyer.
Uh, thank Councilor Hahnaway for his question, the answer is no. Um, the evidence is absolutely clear that the two-child benefit cap is not effective at moving people into work and is in fact keeping some one point one million children locked into poverty. In my view, the entire system of universal credit is in need of reform, but what makes matters worse is that that reform will be very challenging, given the economic context. Scrapping this policy would cost an estimated one point three billion pounds at a time when the Conservatives have crashed the economy, created a cost of living crisis and left residents with the worst uh level of taxation for seventy years. Um, as was mentioned before by Councilor Southers, we are still recovering as well from last year's unfunded Liz Truss mini-budget backed by Simon Clarke and paid for by working people. Our party doesn't make unfunded commitments like that, we will tackle child poverty, but we'll do so in a fiscally responsible way. Thank you.
Councilor Hahnaway.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm very heartened and relieved to hear your answer. That's uh very good news indeed. Can I just draw your attention to a briefing by the Child Poverty Action Group and the End Child Poverty Campaign and the Church of England, which says that this policy will affect one, well, it has affected by April, one point five million children, including one point one million children growing up in poverty. Their families are missing out on three thousand two hundred and thirty-five pounds a year, and as it rolls out, more children will be affected. The policy is pushing families into deep positive poverty. And as, as you well know, these are children going without breakfast on school days, who are not making a fuss about money with their parents because they know how stressed their parents are. Um, and I, I just can't understand how any political leader would want to burnish their image as a tough decision-maker, using the health and welfare of poor children to do it. I thank you very much for that answer.
Councilor Meyer.
Um, so I, I think this question raises an important point, I won't speak for, for national politics, but I think that although we know the overwhelming majority of policy levers to intervene on child poverty are national ones, and we can't make, we can't use that as an excuse, and we have to do everything we can within our borough to tackle this issue, and that's why I set out on day one that child poverty was my top priority. It's why we've convened a task and finish group across the council to work on this issue, bringing in officers from different teams. Uh, I will have um some important news to update the council on, my annual report in September at the next full council, but I'm looking forward to working with everyone across this chamber to tackle this issue of child poverty, which is uh so fundamental to our borough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. That concludes the meeting for this today.